Open up the meeting of the Neshoba Regional School Committee here at 6:02 PM. If you would like to, please mute and join me in pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, everybody, so I have first on our agenda is citizens' comments. I have not received any citizens' comments, so I do not believe we have any this evening, which means we're going to be heading right into executive session. And in order to do that, I'll lean on Amy for a motion.
You got it. I move into executive session at 6:03 PM pursuant to MGL Chapter 38, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Director of Student Services. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body in the chair, so declares executive session to include the school committee and Superintendent Downing. Committee will return to open session at the conclusion of the executive session.
And I will second that, adding that I do declare it is necessary. Any discussion on the motion? Go ahead, Scott.
Do we need to identify who is included and not included?
It did. It said would include the school committee and Superintendent Downing.
Okay.
Thanks, Scott. Any further discussion? All right, let's take the vote. I vote yes. Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Shondor?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Sharon? Yes, she said. Dana?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And Karen?
Yeah, I was late. I don't even know what we're voting on.
We go into executive session.
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
Sorry.
That's all right. We are in executive session. For Neshoba Regional School Committee meeting at 6:28 PM. And we are going to now move on to our next item on the agenda, and that's the consent agenda. So I'll turn to Amy for a motion on that.
I move to approve the consent agenda February 28th, 2024, containing draft meeting minutes of February 7th, 2024, and the warrant of March 1st, 2024.
I'll second that. And is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll take the vote. I vote yes. Shondor?
Danny, since I wasn't there.
Okay. Scott?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Karen? So yes. Thanks. Jackie?
Yeah.
Amy Vessels?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
And Dana?
Yes.
Okay, I think I got everybody. All right, everybody, so that's the consent agenda. Now we will move on. The agenda is calling for a chairperson update, but I have none. We're going to then move on to our student representative report. And I do see Hansey and, forgive me, is Ava present? I can't tell.
Ava's actually flying right now. She said she'll try and join to listen in, but she's on a plane.
That's some serious dedication. Okay, so Hansey, I know you can shoulder the burden here. So take it away with your report.
Thank you. So our report tonight is kind of a mixture of student events, as well as a very productive session we had with Superintendent Downing and our school architects were revolving around our bathrooms for the new building. So I'm going to start by announcing that we're excited that our spring play, The Drowsy Chaparral, will begin selling tickets very soon. Next up is a report on our sports teams. We will be introducing a boys volleyball team, as well as a girls golf team, starting this spring. So we're super excited for those opportunities. We would also like to extend our congratulations to our winter sports teams on an amazing season. Playoffs are starting and the schedule is as follows. The boys hockey team will play Summers at Berkeley on Wednesday, 2/28 at 6:00 PM at Driscoll Ice Arena in Fall River. The girls hockey will play Auburn on Thursday tomorrow at 7:50 PM at NESC. The girls basketball will play at Duxbury on Friday at 6:30 PM. And the boys basketball will host Milford on, also on Friday at 6:00 PM. We'd like to extend congratulations to Caroline Collins, one of our seniors, who came in first place at the meet of champions, Allstate, in the two mile this weekend. We'd also like to recognize Neshoba senior Tyler McNaul, who was named one of the 12 Allstate High School journalists for 2024. The class of 2024 is currently running a popcorn fundraiser. This began on Tuesday morning and will run until the end of day Friday. We will receive 50% of the profits, and so far, our fundraiser has been doing extremely well, raising over 3,000 in total. The process is extremely simple. Just visit our link and place your order. It'll be directly shipped to your house. Starting on Monday, March 4th, the NRHS Interact Club will be holding a food drive for the Stove Food Pantry. All non-perishable donations are appreciated and can be dropped off in the bins at the front of the school. Our annual dodgeball tournament that's hosted by the senior class is scheduled for March 14th. This will be our third year hosting this event. We hope to have more teams this year and pass it down to our juniors to take over and hopefully make it a tradition for a long time. Class officers, student council, and school committee representative elections are underway, and students are preparing their materials in March with elections on April 11th. Finally, we're coming to our bathroom report. So during this report, we discussed what students would like to see for our new bathrooms, and we looked at the model of the gender-inclusive bathroom. So today, overall, students were very pleased with this individual stall setup, and the students feel like this would address their overall concerns revolving around privacy, comfort, safety, and overall anti-vaping and drug use that occurs in the bathrooms currently. So students addressed some key points about their concerns of this model that I would like to share with you guys. So students are concerned about lockdown safety and escape with this model, fearing that in case of an intruder, there's no way to escape the occupied bathroom stall, especially if the intruder is right near the bathroom. But at the same time, Superintendent Downing mentioned that with the hallway space around the bathrooms, it'll be easy to maneuver in case they're around it to try and get away from the intruder if that so happens. Another concern that was brought up was related to the point of having so much space between the bathroom stalls and the sinks. And we were kind of worried about students trying to cut through this space to get to class quicker. And this kind of takes away from the whole concept of having that privacy near the bathrooms if so many kids are just trying to flood through these little areas to get to class quicker. So even if it doesn't seem like a really big deal, it makes it harder for those who'd like privacy near the sinks or even within the bathroom stalls to have that. Students also brought up some key points for what they want to see in the bathrooms. A lot of our students addressed wanting dispensers for feminine products in every stall, or at least in the independent accessible stalls that have a sink within their own stall. They'd also like to see feminine product disposal boxes attached to the wall of every stall for those who need them. And they brought up the point that those that don't find the need for them can simply ignore them and go about their day. We also expressed an idea to include a panic button in bathroom stalls in case of an emergency and a student finds that they need to contact the nurse or admin immediately. And finally, the idea was brought up to have soft music playing in the bathroom stalls as well to provide a more comfortable and inclusive environment for everyone. But overall, a lot of students expressed being very happy with the bathroom model and the locker room models. That's it for tonight.
Thank you, Hansey.
All right, thanks, Hansey.
Madam Chair, may I?
Please.
Want to thank Hansey and the student council for engaging with me and our architects today. Attorney Gleason, this will be an agenda item I know with our next school building committee, and our architects will have an opportunity to explore some of that design with the SBC, as that was the recommendation that the working group put forward to say, this is an item we need to put out in the public conversation. So that, we're asking Attorney Gleason to have that included on the next agenda.
All right. Thanks for taking the time and including the kids, letting them express their thoughts. They're the ones who use it, obviously. I wonder if there are any questions or comments? Over to Jackie.
I don't have any questions, but I did want to take the opportunity. I get to have the unique and privilege to be the intermediary between our diversity equity awareness and racial justice advisory board to the school committee. And I wanted to take the opportunity, if it's okay with you and the group, to share a statement that they shared with me, but also that I wanted to read to the group.
So Jackie, I do want, I do want to hear that, but would you mind doing that during the subcommittee reports?
Yeah, so one of the things that we had particularly talked about was that we wanted to make sure that we know a lot of the students listen at the beginning and then after it goes for a long time. So I just, my concern is that I wanted to be able to take this opportunity to have it in real time when Hansey's here and we likely could potentially have other people listening and watching before.
All right, so if there's no objection from the rest of the committee, perhaps we can move Jackie's Dear J subcommittee report to this moment in time. I'm not seeing any objections, so Jackie, the floor is yours. Go right ahead.
Thanks, everyone. I really appreciate your flexibility. So basically, we just wanted to say thank you to not only the high school representatives, the school committee, and also our administrators for the opportunity to listen to the comprehensive report that was shared last week and then also to get an update today. We want to also formally thank Superintendent Downing, Chair Verburrito, Cohen, and Principal Boynton for attending the school council meeting at the high school and really thinking about and entering into conversations with students regarding the areas of strength and areas of development for the high school. Dear J and myself, we see this as a really excellent opportunity for student engagement, which is an essential part of both understanding the needs and priorities of our students, but also designing solutions, which we're hearing tonight in real time. Students bring firsthand experiences and provide innovative visionary and practical ideas to discussions and to problem solving. Student engagement in school, student council work, and also school committee participation is also an opportunity for experiential learning for students, and it allows them to apply their learning to real-life civic engagement, budgeting, policymaking, and educational leadership, which is all goals that we, as a district, have identified in our strategic plan. We're looking forward to and are excited about the district and the school committee and the student council initiating these conversations. And we're very excited to continue to support that work going forward. So thank you to Hansey and to Ava and to the school council and to our administrators.
Sure, that, Jackie. So Hansey, I hope you can bring that back to your student council, make sure that they know that we support you guys and that we're happy that this is underway. And again, I'd just like to show some support to our administrative team. And I just think it's really powerful that they are engaging and engaging with you guys and consistently looking to hear from you, which is great. So, Hansey, I have one question for you, and it's about something that you mentioned in your report. You said that you guys are starting to hold elections, student government elections, in March slash April, right? And that actually struck me as interesting. Is this, does this mean that the new round of leaders, I mean, first of all, is this typically what you guys do? And secondly, does this mean that the new round of leaders, they kind of are inaugurated, if you will, this school year?
Yeah, I think it is a bit earlier than typical. I don't honestly know the reason why. I know that we do have homeroom on April 11th. Maybe that's why they chose to do it that way. I do not believe that it'll be like the start of that new term starting then. I think that will begin in the new school year, as it typically does.
Great. So you and Ava will definitely be staying with us through the end of the year?
Correct.
Until you graduate, but Ava will remain.
Yes.
She has no choice.
Please stay.
Ava will continue. Ava will continue next year as a senior, and we have current sophomores applying for the position.
Awesome. Such a great process. So thanks for that, too. Any other questions for, oh my gosh, I see Ava! She's on the plane.
On the plane.
Wow, that is like true dedication.
I'm not sure if she's frozen or can hear us, but Ava, we're so appreciative of your efforts to join us. Thanks. Any other questions for Hansey on the student report? All right, Hansey, keep up the great work, and we'll see you next time.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
All right. Awesome. Okay, guys, we're going to keep going on here with the superintendent's report. And if you turn your attention there, you will see that the first item here is the Director of Student Services recommendation for hire. And I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Downing for a little introduction.
I can't stop smiling about Ava on the airplane, so forgive me. So, thank you. I'm going to actually read from my script. I typically don't do that. With us tonight is Ms. Rand Demanshi with enthusiasm. I recommend to the Neshoba Regional School Committee that I be authorized to hire Roman Demanshy as the Director of Student Services beginning July 1st, 2024. Ms. Demanshy is currently the Director of Pupil Services for the Pittsburgh Public Schools, where she served for 21 years, 10 years as Director of Special Education/Pupil Services Director. Ms. Demanshy demonstrated throughout the vetting process that she is a highly qualified candidate who has the skills, knowledge, and talent to lead our district in the Student Services Department. And I know we had an opportunity to have a discussion in executive session, but I wanted to take this public moment to say that we are extremely excited about Ms. Demanshy joining our team. She brings a wealth of experience, a wealth of knowledge, that is going to benefit us tremendously. And it was, it was a consensus amongst the leadership team and the feedback that I collected throughout the process that she was our number one. She is our candidate, and we look forward to her joining the team, Madam Chair. So I'll turn it to you at this point.
All right, thanks for that, Kirk. And Rand, we're so happy that you're here with us. I just wanted to give a quick note on process, especially for community members who might be watching. So the school committee, as many might know, is said to have one employee, and that is the superintendent. So some might wonder why we are involved in the appointment of this position. And that is because Mass General Law does indicate to school committees that they do have the responsibility of approving the appointments of several officers in the hierarchy of a public school system. And this particular position is among those that we approve the appointment. The language does say that we are to give heavy consideration to the superintendent's recommendation and that our approval should not be denied for kind of capricious reasons. So we are going to, I see Mike's hand up. Mike, did you want to add to this? Or do you want to maybe welcome our?
Yes, yes, I'll certainly wait for you to finish up your piece, and then I'd like to just ask a question. That's all.
Okay, so I'm going to actually, I'm going to allow Rowan to give a brief introduction to the committee so that we can get to know her a little bit. So Rowan, if you would like to, just let us know what brings you to Neshoba and what you perhaps hope to accomplish here.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Downing and school committee members. I am very excited to start my appointment in July. As Superintendent Downing said, I've been in Pittsburgh for 21 years in various roles. And I do love the position and the work that I do. I am, of course, looking for a change in my life now, not just professionally, but personally as well. And I'm really looking forward to this as a great fit for me. I feel like the community is something that I'm striving to support and help. I was welcomed with a full-day tour of the district. I went to every school, and it just felt like the perfect fit for the work that I've been doing, the work I want to continue to do. So I'm really excited to be a part of the Neshoba community.
Well, we're happy you're here. Thanks so much for that introduction. And I just want to turn it over to Mike really quick before we take a motion.
Yes, hi, welcome, Rowan, and, you know, congratulations on your consideration. I'm wondering, you know, in many ways, Pittsburgh Public Schools and the Shoba Regional School District are different districts, different populations. And I'm wondering what kind of work at the Pittsburgh schools will inform some of the work that you hope to do at Neshoba, given where Neshoba is at, kind of philosophically and strategically?
That's a great question. Thanks. I, I do understand that Pittsburgh is a very different population. But at the core of the work, it's very similar to the strategic plan that Neshoba is undertaking. And Pittsburgh has a very similar strategic plan. Because at the core of the work, it's about making every student reach their goals and the families to reach their goals as well. Focusing on the curriculum, the MTSS model, I've done a lot of work in that area in Pittsburgh. I would continue to support that work in Neshoba. I have, my role right now is very much not just special education, but I also oversee the 504 process, the social-emotional learning for the district. And that's all part of the strategic plan that Neshoba is carrying out throughout the next several years. So I feel like it can be a real integral part of that work.
Great, thanks for that elaboration. Appreciate it. So we're going to head over to our vice chair, and Amy, if you could give us a motion?
You bet. I move to accept the superintendent's recommendation to hire Ms. Rowan Demanshy. Demanshy? Actually, could you clarify how you say your last name?
Demans.
Okay. Ms. Rowan Demanshy to the position of Director of Student Services beginning July 1st, 2024.
I will second that motion. Thanks, Amy. Is there any further discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll head for the vote, and I will begin. I say yes. And Joe?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yeah.
Amy Vessels?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Shondor?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
And Mike?
Uh, yes again.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I get you twice? Did I get every, did I get everybody?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. May. I'm a yes.
Thanks, Karen. Yeah, jumped. So we dropped Dana. She's trying to get back in. But we have a unanimous decision, and I would like to really, in the most heartfelt way, welcome you aboard, Rowan, and we're so happy you're here, and we thank you for your energy and your effort.
Thank you. I really appreciate that, and I look forward to meeting all of you and working with everyone.
Great. Yay! Welcome, welcome to Neshoba.
Congratulations and welcome.
It's a great place to be. There's no two ways about it. It's a great place to be.
Yes, I felt that all day and every, you know, I've been through the interview and then the full day, and that was a feeling that really, I mean, just the atmosphere and the excitement that the staff and the students have every day coming into the building, you can feel that. And it's, so it's, I'm looking forward to being there.
Great. All right, so Kirk, do you want to wrap up?
Yeah, so thank you, Rowan. You go have a great night, and I will reach out to you tomorrow so we can have some discussions and get things wrapped up.
Excellent. Thank you.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Hi, Rowan.
Okay.
All right, so we're, yeah, continue on, Kirk.
Yeah, continuing on with the superintendent report. Our nurse leader, Mariah Zwicker, is putting together the wellness committee. And part of the wellness policy is to bring forward a school committee member to join that team. And then there's going to be multiple meetings, March 26th as well as March 23rd. And so we're looking for a volunteer from the school committee to join that. I am aware that one of our members has already stepped forward to volunteer in Dr. Reiner. So thank you for that. We thank you for, A, looking at your superintendent report super early to the meeting. That I'm a big fan of. And, and two, for being willing to join that wellness committee. Nurse Wicker is very excited to have you on that committee. Very excited. So thank you. And next is a food services update. Now I'd like to bring Operations and Finance Director Ross Moore-Carren to the room.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I know I'm presenting later as well. It's always a pleasure to bring things forward. Letting you all know this evening, as you see in the superintendent's update, that we're going to be having a change to our food services department. As a section of the superintendent's update explains, beginning next year, we'll be contracting our food services director position to a food service management company. This is not an outsourcing of our entire food service department. Rather, it's a move for us toward goals of expanding our menu options, overcoming supply chain and procurement challenges, increasing our efficiencies and our compliance with DSE's Office of Food and Nutrition Programs Guidelines and Regulations. We do have neighboring districts that have adopted this model and are finding it very successful. And again, when I say this model, I mean the, the model of the sole position being contracted with a food service management company, not a wholesale change from the department. So I've been speaking with those districts about their experience and feedback on the service and with the RFP process that they undertook. DSE does have a model RFP, which we'll use, and I've reached out to our state contact for guidance and support. I'm assuming I'll hear back from him within a couple of days, and we'll get going. I do want to reiterate that this is, RFP is just the sole position of food services director. All other food service employees remain based on their contracts and collective bargaining agreements. I've communicated the shift to our food service kitchen staff, and tomorrow I'll be meeting with our kitchen managers to answer some of their initial questions. Obviously, their input and participation in this process, as we consider firms, is going to be critical, helpful, and obviously very supportive towards our goals. So I'll continue to update the school committee on this process, and once we're up and running, certainly invite you in for lunch next year.
So Madam Chair, I think before we move on to the strategic work, we'll, we'll take any questions from the committee on the announcements.
Questions about food service update. Amy Cohen?
Yeah, I'm wondering if this has, if you know yet what the budgetary consequences are of that decision?
So what we'll do, so I spoke with the other districts about this a little bit. So we put together the RFP, not having fully looked at that section yet, this is Cohen. But when we work with the RFP, and I'll certainly work with our state to make sure we can identify the finances obviously accurately and towards our goals. We know that we have offsets in our budget for next year from food services, and we want to make sure that those are going to be able to be upheld. So we'll look at what the financial impact is from that. But essentially, we're turning this sort of like service over to them as they manage our food services. But whatever our financial pieces are, we get to state that it had a time in the RFP to make sure that those things happen.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
So moving on to our updates on strategic work, I'll talk about the equity audit and update in a moment. I first want to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Friend to bring some learning updates to the committee.
Thank you, Superintendent Downing, and thank you to the committee. I'm excited to provide three updates tonight from teaching and learning. The first is an update and announcement about the launch of our new Neshoba podcast called The Great Road. Not sure if anyone's had a chance to take a listen yet. But this effort is in conjunction with our work to expand our communication strategies to strengthen awareness of the good things we have going on in the district while increasing family engagement. Jed Stefanowitz, our Director of Digital Learning and Innovation, has created the podcast. And so we're grateful for him and his efforts there. He's a great moderator. The first episode was released in December, and that episode featured our DECA program and a conversation with Mr. A and all the great things our DECA program is doing with Mr. A and Ms. Norton. The second episode was released last week during February vacation, and that was entitled The Portrait of Neshoba. and that was entitled The Portrait of a Neshoba Graduate. This one featured myself, not as awesome as Mr. A or Ms. Norton, and Assistant, um, Principal Janine, Janine Boulay. On the docket for future episodes includes our EMT Program, Robotics, Drama, and Students for Social Justice. Also exciting, Mr. Stefanowitz told me today that the next episode will feature a student who will co-moderate with him on the next podcast episode. So we think that's pretty cool. The podcast is linked to the district website and can be found on Spotify as well. Should I move on to the second?
Yeah, please just move on with your next two items. Yeah.
The second update provides a Renaissance Star Winter Screening Update to follow up on the data that Superintendent Downing presented regarding our work on our district's student learning goal. Specifically, data from our kindergarten screening, which concluded the Friday before va- vacation on February 16th. Growth to celebrate here, and that 74% of our kindergarten students met or exceeded typical and high-growth learning targets. This goal surpasses our district goal of 70%. Uh, as a, as gentle reminder, back in the fall, we started the year with 58.4% of our students meeting or exceeding growth targets for early literacy from last fall. We'll continue to work on these growth targets through the spring as we work to support the learning and growth for each and every one of our students. So while we're proud of the 74%, our goal really is 100%, um, but we're proud of the efforts and the growth that we've seen with our winter assessment. I would like to personally commend our Neshoba educators, our teaching teams, our principals, and our instructional coaches for all of their hard work in supporting our students' growth, and not to mention our students as well, even our kindergartens, kindergarteners for really digging in and demonstrating learner's mindset. My opinion, all of this is notable. We have work to do, uh, and we're going to continue to dig in and work, but we're proud of the, the results from the winter. Of note, our spring assessment window will conclude in May, early June. And with K to eight conferences beginning tomorrow, families can look to learn more about, learn more about their child's Renaissance Star results, including growth, along with the other assessment data that teachers have in their purview, including classroom-based measures. And we know that our, uh, K to eight teachers are prepared for conferences beginning tomorrow and tomorrow evening. And then the third update, if I may. Okay. The third update is about our continued work with our nine through 12 science curriculum review process. I know that I've shared with the committee that we will be surveying students and families as the next part of the process, and that time has, has come. While the update in the Superintendent's Report notes that students will be surveyed this week in their science classes, we have actually made the decision today under the guidance from Ms. Peer, the Science Department head, to move the student survey timeline to next week. We've had some competing demands for time this week with the course selection process underway, and the Science Department wants to make sure that there's sufficient time for both. As a result, students will be surveyed in their science classes next week. And please, families, encourage, um, your child and check in with your child and let them know the survey is coming. We very much want their feedback and their input about their science experience. With our families, families will be surveyed using Thought Exchange. Once again, as I had mentioned, you will remember that we use Thought Exchange with strong participation from our pre-K to five families earlier this year when we sought feedback around our literacy curriculum review. I think we had 6,000 engagements from our pre-K to five families. Our nine through 12 families will receive this Thought Exchange invite via direct email on Friday, directly following the comment. So on Friday afternoon, the Thought Exchange will include two multiple choice questions, three open-ended questions, and then one big question, where families will have an opportunity to engage with the thoughts of others. I've profi- provided the big question in the Superintendent's Update today, but it is as follows. The Neshoba Regional High School is planning for the future of science at Neshoba through the Curriculum Review Cycle. We are assessing our current practice and making decisions about the next steps, and we want to hear from our families. What would you like to see in a highly engaged, future-ready science class as we strive to prepare our students for the future? We will go ahead and share the results, patterns, and trends with families and this committee from our Thought Exchange and from our student survey, and use the information to help inform the steps we've already taken in the next phases of the process, which will include, but are not limited to, making decisions around current instructional practices and future decisions around curriculum and course offering, offerings, resources, and course sequencing. But more to come. And I will be sure to provide the committee with an update as soon as our, uh, student survey results are in and our Thought Exchange, uh, survey closes. I'd like to thank the, um, Linda Peer and Dr. Kate Boynton and Candace McBrady, our Curriculum Director for Math and Science, for helping get these ready to go. I know a lot of conversations have been had with the decision-making around the questions in particular, uh, including the student survey. So, uh, thank you to all those involved. So be on the lookout on Friday for that direct email from, from me.
All right. Fantastic.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'll do my Equity Audit update as an introduction to the presentation that's coming up. So at this point, we can pause and take any questions on strategic work from the committee.
Yeah. So if everybody doesn't mind, um, because the, uh, Laura's update had kind of three distinct parts, let's march through it from the top to the bottom. And so does anybody have any questions or comments about the podcast other than how amazing and awesome it is? Amy.
Yes. My question was, are you guys planning to, uh, collaborate with the journalism class on that? It'd be a really cool project.
That's a great idea, Ms. Vessels. I know that Mr. Stefanowitz is in communication with Ms. Foley Praco, but I'm not quite sure they've had that conversation, but that's a great idea. Thank you.
Yeah, considering we have an award-winning journalist student in Tyler, that's, you know, you have a lot of a lot of hard workers out there. Okay. So any of the, any of the things about the podcast? All right. Let's bring forward any questions that you might have or comments about the universal screener assessments. If any. And did anybody have any questions to ask about the Thought Exchange that's happening for the Science Curriculum Review? Amy.
Sorry, my question was about the screener. I wasn't quick enough.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
That's okay. Um, so my question is actually, um, after conferences are over and, um, families have had a chance to talk with the teachers about the results and, you know, I guess what, you know, whatever conversation they're gonna have about that, are you planning to do any kind of survey to get, um, ca- any kind of, um, thoughts from parents about that, like questions they may still have, or you know what I mean? Kind of get their response to that conversation and, and what they might still need information on, or where they can go with that information, that kind of thing?
Um, we can certainly, you know, you know, you know, review that idea with Superintendent Downing, um, and with Teaching and Learning. I think getting feedback and, you know, as part of our strategic plan too, is in, improving our efforts on communicating student progress and learning and growth is, is straight on in our strategic plan. So the question is directly in line with our work. Um, thank you for the idea. Um, well, you know, we're, we're hoping that our families, uh, our, our teachers are asking during conferences, you know, questions like, do you have any additional questions? Did I answer all of your questions? But following up with them in, in maybe a more objective and encompassing manner would help inform our work and, and what our teachers need to help inform our families. So thank you for that idea.
Any other questions?
Relation to that, Madam Chair, may I?
Please.
In relation to that idea to express to the committee, I, I have received a little bit of feedback about feedback. Um, we, we're trying to be careful about, uh, survey fatigue as well. And that comment has been expressed to me a little bit. So we're trying to be strategic about our, our surveys to ensure it's not just always the most motivated, motivated survey takers taking your survey that rather gives you the sample you're looking for. So we got to balance that as well.
Yeah, I would just piggyback onto Amy Vessel's comment and say that this software is expensive. And, um, you know, justifying the purchase and kind of collecting data on its efficacy is, I think, a really good idea and can only serve us going forward. So, but I get the fatigue piece. We don't want, um, turnout to be low.
Yeah. It's, it's a matter of timing, right? Everything is about timing. So, uh, pacing is, I think, a better way to approach it.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions, guys, about the curriculum review or about the STAR Assessment? All right. So I'm not seeing any. It looks like we're gonna move on to the last piece here, and that's the Equity Audit.
And Madam Chair, uh, would you mind, we can just move from the Equity Audit piece in the update here, straight into our presentation?
Fantastic.
Great. I would like to introduce to our committee Dr. Meg Mayo Brown. Uh, she is joining us here this evening, uh, to present to the committee, uh, the results of the Phase One Report of our Equity Audit. So in the ma- meeting materials for this meeting, you'll find the Phase One Report and presentation, uh, for the NRSD Equity Audit. The Phase One Report is a data analysis provided by Dr. Mayo Brown. This Phase One Report begins a deeper dive into our work that will be presented in Phases Two and Three of the Audit. Overall, our Equity Audit will likely raise many questions we will want to consider in our future work on providing every student what they need to succeed in the Neshoba Regional School District. I want you to know that recently, surveys have been conducted with students, fam- families, uh, faculty and staff. In addition, we performed Equity Walks, um, in all of our schools as part of the audit process. That observational data and survey data will be presented in Phase Two, uh, which is our April 24th School Committee Meeting. So it is not a part of tonight's, uh, presentation. This really is sort of the documents which, uh, we supplied Dr. Brown through, uh, our, our conversations that we've been having about the work. So without further ado, I want to bring, uh, Dr. Mayo Brown, uh, forward, uh, for our presentation and Ms. Masterson. Uh, once Dr. Mayo Brown is, is ready to go, if you wouldn't display. So, uh, Dr. Mayo Brown, if you will.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here with all of you. And, uh, many thanks to Superintendent Downing and Assistant Superintendent Friend for all of their collaboration and support and assistance as we've, uh, launched the audit. And I'm ready to begin whenever, um, whenever you are. There we go. I think we can advance to the next slide. Thank you. So on this slide, I posted, uh, a definition offered by the National Equity Project for, uh, a definition for equity. It's not intended to be the, your definition for equity. It is the lens by which I am using for the audit for purposes of defining educational equity to look at it, uh, through that lens as we conduct different elements of the audit. I've also offered some guiding frameworks, again, which guide, uh, which guide my work through the audit. The first is offered by the Mid-Atlantic Equity Consortium. Uh, and I won't read, um, it, it's in entirety, but the important part of an equity audit is to critically examine policy programs and practices that directly or indirectly impact students and staff. The next, uh, framework is offered by the National Equity Project again, uh, reframing the work of districts, which used to be very focused, particularly around the time of No Child Left Behind and high accountability coming from the federal and state, uh, levels to close achievement and opportunity gaps. That was very much the work of districts, uh, for many, many years. Uh, the Equity Project is offering a new way to think about that work, that it's really about, um, developing systems in a district to increase the capacity of all who engage and work within the system to bring about more equitable outcomes and experiences for each and every student. The third, uh, framework is offered by the Alliance for Resource Equity, and that is actually, uh, the resource that I use to conduct, uh, the audit. You'll see in a few more slides, I talk about methodology and key questions. Those key questions for the audit come directly from the Alliance for Resource Equity, which again offers that it now is a great opportunity, because so many folks are energized around this work to tackle inequity in our schools and to begin and to continue to build the momentum around that work, coming together to understand what the particular issues and challenges might be in a given district and to explore next steps. And then finally, um, Ron Hyfetz offers, uh, a quote that we use quite a bit in different settings to say, again, looking at school districts through a sys- a systems lens, right? It's about the system, that there's no such thing as a dysfunctional organization, because every organization is perfectly aligned to achieve the results it currently gets. So if you want to continue to get the same results, continue to do the same thing. But if you want to change, then, um, change results for students, then something needs to happen differently in the system. And an equity audit is a first step in engaging in that work. Next slide, please. The visual of the iceberg is really intended to say that the Equity Audit is just sort of at the surface, beginning to understand, um, what some of the opportunities and challenges and strengths that exist in a district. There's much below the surface, which is, represents the long-term work of the district, um, particularly around, uh, i- institutional. And what we mean by, uh, when we say institutional, it's really what are the system's policies around discipline, around special education, around hiring, around, um, grading, around homework, around leveling courses. The next piece around ideology is again is system-focused. So what are the system's beliefs about students, about families, about rigor, um, uh, about retention? If we move to interpersonal, that's more focused on in interpersonal interactions, um, teacher-student interactions, interactions between the, the teacher and curriculum, interactions between schools and families, and interactions between schools and students. And finally, internalized is really, again, focused on people in the system, in the district. What are, what personal beliefs exists, uh, across the district? What personal beliefs are there about students, about families, about what excellence looks like and sounds like? Uh, what is, what are examples of rigor? And, um, and different levels of rigor within, within the district. So again, Equity Audit just sort of is very much at the surface. All of the system's beliefs and practices and understanding, um, people's beliefs about schools and families and students and the organization, that is the long-term work of the district that the Equity Audit can certainly launch. Next slide, please. These are the, uh, key questions that again come out of the Alliance for Resource Equity. There are 10 questions here, very much focused on the instructional core, uh, because equity begins in the classroom. If we go back to the guiding definition for the audit around it, all stu- all stu- each and every student, right, receives what they need in order to experience academic and social emotional success. Uh, that's grounded in, much of that is grounded in the classroom and around the instructional core. And when we say instructional core, we mean the relationship between teachers and students in the presence of content. So there are 10 questions here focused, um, primarily on looking at it through that lens. But the, there are also questions around, does the school district, specifically the School Committee in this case, have specific policy and mission and vision around, uh, educational equity? Uh, do students have hot, uh, access to high-quality and culturally relevant curriculum and instructional materials? Does each student have access to teaching practices that are engaging culturally relevant and standards-aligned? Does the teacher and leadership workforce in the district reflect the student diversity in the district? Does each student who needs more high-quality instructional time receive it? Does each student experience a safe school with transparent, culturally sensitive, and consistent expectations and discipline policies? Does each student have access to effective social-emotional learning opportunities? Does each student who needs targeted social-emotional support receive it? Does each student who needs targeted social-emotional support receive it? Is each student enrolled in a school and attending classes that are racially, ethically and socio- socio-economically diverse? And finally, does each student attend a school that actively and meaningfully engages with families? Next slide, please. The methodology for the audit is to use those key questions that I just went over as the framework to engage in an inquiry-based collaborative process to examine the policies, programs and practices within the district. And we do that through quantitative and qualitative data sources. And tonight, you're hearing very much about, through the lens of quantitative data. What is the, what is the data telling us? Much of it is publicly available data that's reported out or to, to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And third, to invite stakeholder voice and participation through surveys and focus groups. As the superintendent mentioned, there are surveys that are out to families and caregivers, faculty and staff and students, and as that survey data comes in, we'll take a look at it, analyze it for patterns and trends and report that back out. Next slide, please. Just to give you sort of a sense of the sort of general timeline of the audit, we launched it on or around January tenth. Tonight, you're hearing the Phase One Report. The surveys, focus groups and equity walks are occurring February through March. In April, you'll receive the Phase Two Report, which includes the information that's that's that we're gathering through February and March. I'll go over that in a second. And then a final report to be delivered on June fifth. Next slide, please. So Phase One Activities, this is what has been occurring since January tenth. I met with the Superintendent, Assistant Superintendents and members of DRJ to frame and launch an inquiry-based audit. Much of the audit was designed around the recommendations provided by DRJ. I've analyzed the district data relative to student performance, discipline, achievement, attendance, social-emotional indicators. And that's been disaggregated, excuse me, I'm losing my voice, by student groups. I've reviewed the written policies and practices, school committee policy, student handbooks for, again, through the lens of equity. And again, we've launched surveys. There are focus groups to be conducted, and we completed our last Equity Walk yesterday. Next slide, please. Phase Two Activities, which will largely occur during the month of March, is we've the first was the inquiry-based Equity Walks that we've talked about that were completed yesterday. It'll be looking at the data from those walks, again, to report out on patterns and trends from a very strength-based, asset-based approach from the, from walking, from visiting the district's six schools. We'll analyze all the survey data for patterns and trends and integrate the focus group data in with the patterns and trends that we learned from the survey. I'll review targeted intervention support, so what is available for students, both academically, socially, emotionally and behaviorally? And then also examine whether students have access to high-quality and culturally relevant curriculum and instructional materials and review family and community engagement practices. Next slide, please. And then Phase Three, which is the report that you will receive in June. First, I would draft the final report, provide it to the Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent DRJ for review and feedback, and then submit the final report to the district to include recommended strategies. I should note, you will not see typically in Phase One or Phase Two of the report any recommended strategies that's reserved for the final report when we have a, when I have a holistic picture of of the district. I do want to say this phased approach is unique to Nishoba. It is something that the superintendent and I talked about, what I have observed in doing other equity audits and reporting to school committees, is if you wait to the very end and and present on a final report, it can be very overwhelming and hard to digest all of the findings, all of the recommendations at a single meeting. Superintendent Downing thought if we broke it into phases and presented along, he thought it would give the opportunity for questions, reflections, things to think about as we move through the next phases of the audit. Next slide, please. So in Phase One, in the executive summary of the report, you'll see that I've noted identified strengths, and again, this is just out of Phase One of, and largely based on data analysis. First strength, the Nishoba Regional School Committee is clearly articulating its commitment to diversity, equity, inclusion. That is noted in your twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four goals. You have two goals that articulate diversity, equity, inclusion. You have a, you adopted a diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging statement on December thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three. You have an advisory committee, the Diversity Equity Awareness and Racial Justice Advisory to the School Committee, and you have a strategic plan. All of those have, it appears as though the School Committee has taken every opportunity to express and articulate its strong commitment to this work. That is a very important foundation for the rest of the district to build on once the School Committee has those elements in place. I will say, based on, on what I've observed in other districts and other equity audits that I have done, that this is really an exemplar of the work of, of what a school committee to do, can do to set the stage for the important work of the district. The district has also demonstrated a significant gap closing result in chronic absenteeism. We'll see a slide on that in just a moment. Among all student groups between school years twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-two, twenty-three, I, it's well-publicized, right, that many, many districts in the Commonwealth are struggling with chronic absenteeism. It's highlighted at the state level, that this is something that districts should be working on. Nishoba is doing the work in closing the gaps across student groups and getting back to pre-pandemic levels. Over the past four years, the school district has demonstrated significant gap closing within the four-year graduation rate. I have a slide on that. We'll look at that in just a second, among the majority of your student groups. The majority of students with disabilities are in inclusive settings. You are exceeding the state target in that way. The state targets, the state sets a target for inclusive settings for students with disabilities. You're exceeding that state, state target that is, that is highlighted in, in the written report. Grade four students, as we look at the data, are, their views of school climate are becoming more favorable over time. That would be interesting perhaps for the district to take a look at what's happening in K-four to create those results. Is there something that, in terms of school climate, that's happening in your early elementary grades that is leading to grade four students over time thinking more favorably about school climate? And then finally, student MCAS performance in the aggregate, this is all kids, exceeds all state averages, and the district is identified by the state as making substantial progress toward its targets. Next slide, please. Here's the slide that I referenced, and again, this is in the written report on chronically absent. So the top slide, I disaggregated student groups, SWD, students with disabilities, English learners, low-income, high-needs males and females. You can see the green bar is twenty-twenty-three, and it's a five-year trend going back to twenty, that twenty-nineteen. What we want to see is that the, that the most current, excuse me, the most current data is getting back to pre-pandemic. We did see a spike across, so every, I think, every district in the Commonwealth in terms of absenteeism. And so you can see there the difference between, if you just were to focus on the light blue bar compared to the green bar next to it, it gives you a sense of the reductions in chronic absenteeism that is occurring in the district. And again, chronic absenteeism is defined as students missing ten percent or more of their school year. So in a hundred-and-eighty-day school year, students that miss eighteen days or more of school are considered chronically absent. The slide below that is done with student groups of students who identify as African-American, black, Asian, Hispanic, Latino, multirace and white. And again, you can see the reduction in chronic absenteeism across most of those, most of those groups. Next slide, please. Similarly, in the four-year graduation rate trend, you will only see four groups highlighted here, high-needs, low-income, students with disabilities and all students, because of the way that the state reports. If it's a smaller cohort, the state will publicly report the graduation rate for a particular student group. But here, the slide demonstrates that over the past four years, the district has demonstrated gap closing among students group. I've noted here that students identified in the high-needs category experienced an eight-and-a-half percent increase in graduation rates. Similarly, students identified as low-income are graduating at a rate of ninety percent compared with seventy-two percent just five years ago. Next slide, please. Areas for a further exploration by the district, these are areas you may want to consider taking a deeper look at internally. The first is the, the potential of disproportionality of students receiving special education services placed in college preparatory classes at the high school. I have a slide on that. We'll, we'll look at that in, in just a moment. As well as, is there equitable access to advanced math coursework at the high school by students of color, multilingual learners and students with disabilities? We'll look at a slide upcoming for that as well. There seems to be disproportionality among student groups who are able to complete advanced coursework. Again, that may be a question of accessibility to that coursework. And there exists disproportionality within advanced place course enrollment among students who identify as African-American and black, Hispanic, Latino and multiracial, as well as students within the low-income designation. And the district may want to consider some root cause exploration of disproportionality among students groups within MCAS performance levels across all the tested grade levels. Next slide, please. This slide, I chose for this slide to show the slide through English classes, because every student needs to take English in high school and needs to take four years of it. So it provides a good opportunity to look at the data through a cour- through course, courses that are required. So you can see here I have English nine, English ten, English eleven, English twelve. It's noted in the report how I looked at English twelve, because there are a variety of courses that students can take. There are three levels for each of those English courses, in addition to advanced placement, which is noted at the bottom. To go across the columns at the top, you'll see that I've got the total number of students in the particular course, and then identified by students with disabilities, students who are on five oh four plans, English learners, students who identify as white, Asian, African-American, indigenous, multiracial and Hispanic and Latino. What I wanted to draw to your attention on this slide is that the number of students with disabilities that are in college preparatory classes at the high school, often it is exceeding, particularly in this case, there are more than fifty percent of your college prep courses are, are students who are students with disabilities. So I think on one hand, I want to say to you, the district is highlighted as having more students in inclusive settings, right? That was a strength. When you look at where the students are in inclusive settings, I would want to ask, is this college prep course, for example, an inclusive setting when more than fifty percent of the students are on IEPs in that class? It's worth the district really thinking about that question and making some determinations and exploration around, A, why this exists, and is this in service of all students? The next slide, please. Is mathematics at the high school. Again, I wanted to show that in Algebra One, in the college prep course, again, you have the trend of fifty percent of the students in, in that particular class this year are students with, with disabilities. The other area I wanted to point out in this slide is if you look, and it's circled in red and also sort of anytime you see sort of a red box, it's an area that I just want to draw attention to. So students with disabilities are not participating necessarily, as we see here, in advanced mathematics. Neither are students who are English learners. And then if we look over to the columns of students who identify as African-American and black, multiracial and Hispanic and Latino, you can see that there are few students in those groups who are accessing advanced math. We know advanced math, participating in those courses sets students up well for college and beyond, sets students up well for careers and in STEM. So again, something that the district may want to take a closer look at in terms of understanding of, I had, doing some root cause analysis. Why does this chart look like, look like this this year? Next slide, please. There's, there's more information, certainly, in the written report. I just wanted to highlight a few areas tonight, but again, note that much of this is in the report. Much of what I highlighted tonight, and much of what's in the report does have a high school emphasis, and that occurs for two reasons. One, school districts have a lot of data around high school, so we want to be sure that we're using that data to really surface what's occurring in, in, in schools. The second thing I want to be sure that I say tonight is that although I'm, I'm sort of highlighting and drawing attention to the high school, my message is not intended to say that there's, that this is a high school challenge. This is a K-12 challenge. Often, the practices and programs and policies, and I, I use a small P, not a big P in policies for school committee policy, just sort of the policies that exist in schools. The decisions that are made about students and the programming that's available to students before they get to high school often will predict what happens in high school. So the data that you're seeing tonight, I just want to sort of put a, you know, sort of put a note, asterisk by that to say, there needs to be a look back at K-eight just as much as you're looking at the high school when you do a root cause analysis in terms of why some of these charts look like, look like they do in the report. Phase Two, very excited to get into the Phase Two work of the audit. This, again, we finished up our Equity Walks, putting together some patterns and trends out of those. I went over that this is the, sort of the, the, we're going to analyze the survey data for patterns and trends. We pull in the focus groups, look at targeted interventions, you know, what's available. Here's the big K-12 look across the board, right? What's available for students? And then that really concludes the PowerPoint presentation tonight. I'm happy to, with, with the superintendent, answer any questions you may have about content process, anything that's in the written report. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Dr. Brown. We really appreciate that presentation. It was very thorough. You're clearly off to an amazing start. We appreciate the work that you and Superintendent, his team have done. We're excited about it. I do bet some people have some questions or comments, so I see Mike's hand. I'll start with him.
Yes, Dr. Ron, that was awesome. I am so glad that this was just Phase One, because there are, I mean, I just have so many questions. I don't think it's appropriate to ask the kinds of questions that I want to ask now, because I think these are sort of internal questions. I do want to say that I really appreciate that last comment you made about this not being a high school issue. This is a, a system-wide K-through twelve consideration, because really K-through eight is sort of the feeder system to the high school, and whatever happens at the high school, kids enter, and we say, what supports do they have? What interventions have occurred? How much progress has been made? So I just think that that's a really important point to make. I guess my question is to both you as the auditor and, if I may, to the district. We have this final report coming up in June, where you'll, I assume, will be making some more targeted recommendations for how the district should proceed. where you'll, I assume we'll be making some more targeted recommendations for how the district should proceed. And then more, more for the district. What do we do with those recommendations? I mean, do we fold them into our strategic plan and sort of build that back up with this new additional information? Because we're already evaluating curriculum, we're already looking at multi-tiered systems of support. So how do we kind of mesh those two realities together? Again, this is sort of a question for both, both parties.
I, I think I'll take this question, Mr. Hresh. So I'll, I'll, I'll take it in sort of a linear fashion. As we bring forward the findings of the final report and the recommendations there, there's two important activities that are going to happen after that. One is the summer retreat for all the district leaders that we conduct where we will disaggregate those findings. The other is the school committee retreat. We, we should work on that together as a school committee as well. And if we harken back to Mr. Hresh, I believe you participated on the strategic planning team, if I recall. We made a conscious decision that the equity audit was going to help us fill out the cultural belonging section of the strategic plan. So from the administrative retreat and the school committee retreat, I think my thought is, and, and certainly this is a sort of a gelatinous thought, if you will, we'll put those things together and we might need to at that point schedule a strategic planning workshop where we will then make recommendations to the school committee on how to add the content of and action steps of the equity audit to the strategic plan.
Well, that is, that's really reassuring. So thank you for that.
Yep.
Let's go over to Amy Cohen next.
Thank you. I, I also just want to express my gratitude for the work that's been done. The amount of information that you managed to compile and present in, you know, concise formats was just, I, I just wanted to soak it all up and we, we, we got it about an hour before the reading and so I still haven't gotten through the whole thing, but I'm just really grateful to the superintendent for allowing this work to get done and to Dr. Mayo Brown for, for doing such a great job at it. Like Mike, I have a lot of questions and I'm having a hard time right now deciding on which way I want to go, but I think the question that I want to ask has to do with some of the information in the report. Starting on page sixteen, that's the safe and supportive school indicators. And I'm not sure how, whether this was highlighted so much in your presentation, but I noticed that when I thought about an equity audit, I was thinking that it was going to include more, more of the categories that are discussed under safe and supporting, supportive school indicators. And so I'm wondering, will phase two of your work or will any of the work that is yet to be done try to dive into looking at some of this data through the lens of other protected classes? I don't know if that's the right word. So for instance, in the paragraph about safe and supportive school indicators, it says that you're looking at strengthening students' social, emotional competencies with regard to race, color, sex, gender identity, religion, national origin, and sexual orientation. Tonight's presentation really just focused a lot on it didn't include all those categories. And when I go down to where you discuss bullying, I just wonder how much of the, the one of the conclusions that you came to says that bullying behaviors increase kind of as kids progress through the system from grade four to grade ten. So I'm, when you take a look at that, will you be looking at it through these additional categories like religion, national origin, sexual orientation, that kind of stuff?
Not all of them. Will the student surveys, I find, yield quite a, and family caregiver surveys yield can yield some data around that. And it depends on the way that we disaggregate the data to look at it through through that, through that lens. The information that's in, again, in this section is what is publicly available, right? In terms of the vocal results, the youth risk behavior survey and things of that nature. Once we, more really, once I start to pull together the information from the focus groups, the information from the survey, and then other information that comes to light via, in terms of what is available for students. We'll have more. I don't know that it will specifically address the areas around. For example, you say religion. I don't, I have not had an audit where that really came to light through the available resources that we had to take a look at at the time.
Okay. Just as a follow-up question, how is the data from the surveys, where is that captured? The surveys that went to students and parents?
That's phase two.
Phase two. Okay. Thank you very much.
Over to Jackie.
There it goes, sorry. I just wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you for a really thoughtful approach that Superintendent Downing and Dr. Mayo Brown are taking. It's a lot of information and I do feel like oftentimes in these spaces, whether it happened at summer retreat or in casual conversations in our communities, talking about diversity, equity, belonging, inclusion is, it's such an important part of what we do. And it also brings up a lot of, I, I think, energy and emotion because I think we all know how important these things are. So I, I wanted, I want to say thank you for this phased approach. I think it's going to allow for us the space and the time to really look at and dig into the information that's coming out at each phase and then being able to work collaboratively as a school committee with our superintendent, with our district administrators, and then also with our advisory boards to make sure that we are using this information to, to really, I think, make some important and meaningful decisions. So I don't have anything extra to add other than I really do appreciate everything that everyone is doing. And also that really understanding that what we do in preschool, kindergarten, first, second, third, and fourth grade does equal what happens for students when they get to high school. That's a very important part of what we need to understand and recognize. So thank you.
Thanks, Jackie. Dana, I saw your hand up. Anything?
I think I just had more high-level background questions. It's been a while. I know she's spent a lot of time talking about leveling and it's been a while since I've been in high school and I don't have a high school child, so I just had more follow-up to that. I don't know if this is the right time for those questions, though.
It's, it's just like a vocabulary question?
Well, it's just more like, I, I want to understand the difference between the college prep and accelerated classes. Like, do they have a different curriculum? Are they just the same curriculum at a slower pace?
That's a great question, but maybe Superintendent Downing or more, I don't know.
Well, I might invite Assistant Superintendent Friend into this conversation. This is her area expertise, but I will say, Dana, all of our courses are based on the state frameworks to meet base educational standards and they each are more difficult as you progress with them. But Ms. Friend, do you want to address that?
No, I think you had, you addressed it Superintendent Downing. I would say that I think we would, we would see different resources, different materials, different presentations of materials in the different levels of courses. And we recognize that we, you know, we have work to do with, you know, with our curriculum and in our instruction everywhere and at the high school. And we're working on it, but we recognize we, we have a ways to go.
Okay. Are students required to take the classes they're recommended for? Or if you're recommended for a college prep class, are you able to opt into an accelerated class?
Yes. Yes, yes, you are.
But is that, is that done with?
What about your high school transcript?
Dana, Dana, hang on one second. So Kirk, I know that we identified in the strategic planning that the rigidity of the tracking system is an issue for us. And so you say that students can override course recommendations, but is it that easy?
Well, it is in theory, isn't it, Ms. Viverito? The issue becomes when there's entrenchments that happen, the predictability process just feeds upon itself. And that's what we're in deep study about now and why leveling is in our strategic plan. You know, and I'll remind the committee, that's a five-year strategic plan. And as we're chipping away at all these steps, those are all coming into the fold. And so as, as Dr. Mayo Brown presented tonight, I suspect that we're going to see a recommendation regarding that area when we get the final report in June.
Dana, you had one other, you had something else? Go, keep going.
Yeah. Do the high school transcripts identify the level, college prep versus accelerated? I know like they would for the, like AP classes.
Yes, they do.
They do.
And, and.
But does that weight your JP differently?
Their weight, yeah.
Okay. I think that's.
Great. Thanks, Dana. Great questions, actually. Keep them coming. I see Amy's hand up again, but I wonder if anybody else has a quick question before I go back to Amy? I had actually one observation that I would just like to share, and I wonder if it's, if we're too late or if maybe we can consider it. In looking at this, the data around class placement, I noticed that we are not using the category of gender identity. And I wonder if that's something, because that's something that I'm interested in understanding better is I know that many of us are actually on the screen right now are high school teachers and we know that the upper-level classes are more and more kids who identify as female as opposed to kids who identify as male. And so I'd actually like to know a little bit more about that disparity and if that disparity does in fact exist at Neshoba as I, I'm hypothesizing that it does and why that is happening. And perhaps shifting that to help our our kids who identify as male making their way into those upper-level classes in all the disciplines.
I'm, I'm scrambling at the moment to open my, the comprehensive report and I do, I want to apologize to the committee again in sending out the presentations. I didn't have the attachment for the comprehensive report and you got that earlier in the evening. But Lee, I believe, and Dr. Mayo Brown, remind me, some of that breakdown is included in that report.
It, it is because I, it did, it caught my attention because there is some, you're right, there, there is some, there is some disproportionality exists. If you look on page fourteen, these are students, percent of students in grades eleven and twelve who are completing advanced courses. This is information that's reported by the district to, to Desi and Desi is very clear on what counts as an advanced course. But you'll see in that chart that females or students who are identifying as female are participating are completing advanced courses at a higher rate than their, than their male peers. That also holds true in advanced. Yeah, I believe, yes, and it, it's, it's happening to some degree. It depends on the course in your advanced placement courses. That's on page sixteen. I also highlighted it for your graduation rates because again, students who are identifying as female are graduating at, at higher rates than, again, students who are identifying as male. So that is, I'm paying attention to that as we're working through because it did jump out at me. So where I can note it and there is a discrepancy, I will continue to flag it for the committee.
Fantastic. Thanks so much. Okay, so Amy Cohen.
Thank you for allowing me to ask one more question here. I was also really glad, like other members of the committee have said, to hear you say that it's really important to look back at our practices in K-through-eight to understand how they're informing what's currently, the trends we're seeing at the high school currently. And one of the things I've noticed as a parent of children who span all those categories, I have, my youngest is in fifth grade and I've had one graduate from high school and go into college, is that seventh grade seems to be a critical year within our framework in terms of accessing advanced math coursework. And I just wanted to, I guess, make sure that that is part of the review that happens going forward and looking at how students are able to access advanced coursework. Because that, as a parent, that seems to be kind of like the critical pathway, seventh grade, spring of seventh grade. And I, I'm just, I think that that it would be really good to use your time to get an opinion on that process.
Thank you for the feedback on that. We'll follow up on that, Ms. Cohen. You can bet that.
Awesome. Thank you. And Dana, your, your hand keeps falling, but did you have one more question? You're good. Okay. This is so exciting. I'm so grateful, Kirk, to you and your team and to Dr. Mayor Brown and to the community for supporting this line item. I think that this work is going to be huge. And like Mike said, it's really encouraging to see that we're going to be reworking and amending the strategic plan in the months that follow. So kudos to you and, and thanks, everyone.
Well, Madam Chair, if I may.
Sure.
I'll, I'll, I'll accept your kudos and at the same time, remind everyone that the reason why we're doing this work is because we came together as a community two years ago because we collectively said we wanted to chart the course for the future. And so our commitment to equity in the school system is that amalgamation of, of parents, administrators, teachers, students, that we're all saying in all of the areas of our strategic plan, these are the things we want to do moving forward. So that commitment to equity that we put in cultural belonging and standard in, in section three of our strategic plan is the very first bullet with intention, if you recall from the strategic planning process. So I appreciate your recognitions, Ms. Viverito. Let's recognize everyone in our community and everyone participating in that process is recognizing this is the important work that needs to be done.
You're here. All right. So I think that that concludes this portion of the agenda. And we look forward to all the future steps to come. And thank you one more time to Dr. Meg Mayo Brown for helping Neshoba in this work.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay, everybody. So I am looking at the agenda and it looks like new business has come to a conclusion. And we're going to move to our, it's always our favorite part, finance and operations and the FY twenty-five budget update. And Kirk, I will let you set it up, perhaps.
Well, since it's seven fifty-three, we'll offer you another brief presentation, much like the one you just observed. We do have some updates tonight and a lot of the updates we're going to provide you are financial updates. So Mr. Mo Karen is, is going to be guiding us through a lot of those updates. But Ms. Masterson, if you wouldn't mind bringing up the PowerPoint?
Actually, Superintendent Downing, I don't mind driving the PowerPoint. It's okay. Just, I know that we're in sync on this, so I can, I don't mind.
Yep. So I'll just begin while Mr. Mo Karen is pulling that up. But last night, we had the, the opportunity to participate in our annual joint finance committee advisory meeting that was attended by the finance committees of Lancaster and Stowe and the advisory committee of Bolton. So some of the information that came out last night is information we have not put before this board yet, but we knew that going into the process. And so we're going to provide you more detail to that than we did last evening. And, and I'll just remind the committee that when we close this presentation on February seventh, we identified that we needed to contract the budget either through the form of revenue or through the form of, of cuts, contract by one point five million dollars. And this presentation is going to walk you through our progress to date in reaching that target. So with that, I will turn it over to Business and Operations Director Ross Mo Karen to lead us through these next pieces. So Ross, take it away.
Yeah, thank you, Superintendent Downing. As we always do when we provide an update or even the initial public review of the budget, we share our timeline to date. So you can see all of our items that are checked off. Um, so far, we have our um, public hearing next week along with um, the next um. Update uh, on this calendar that's not updated, but we obviously did on the suit, the school committee calendar. So this is the work to date shared uh, as well at the joint FinCom meeting last week. So as Superintendent Downing said, obviously the overall goal here is to provide you an update on the budget. So we'll talk about where it was at, at the end of the last meeting, what we've done to reduce it. What offsets we've been able to build in and then talk about next steps moving forward. So as you may recall, this is where our operating budget landed at the end of our last meeting. Um, that included the. Approximately five hundred thousand dollars in special education estimated cost reductions. Uh, the almost two hundred thousand dollars in facilities and technology estimated cost removals. And then also the removal of the new programming for both the EL instructional assistant and the um, new special education classroom. Um, at the primary level. And again, these are where our uh, percentages and um, operating budget assessments landed. Obviously throughout the process, just a reminder, our capital debt assessment percentages are not going to change. Uh, they're based on the enrollment of the high school as well as with the capital debt total. Uh, that will be paying out next year. That includes the onboarding of the high school bond number one. Um, again, we saw fluctuations in these, not due to any operating budget changes. But to the change in the chapter seventy state aid figure that came in prior to uh, the last meeting. So that obviously impacted um, where our um, percentages increases and the operating budget assessments to each of our towns. So we looked at insurance and benefits, the class side standards and K twelve enrollment. Um, I did a study of some extracurricular advisor um, stipend pieces and looking at. Um, you know, that we talked about, we, we pay out approximately two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars out of this budget for FY twenty-five. And those extracurricular stipends. I, I did uh, survey all of the extracurricular um, advisors that receive a stipend and asked just, you know, at the base level. How many kids do you have right now? How often are you meeting? Um, and are there any fees or costs associated? With your program and, and what are you doing about supplies and materials? So it was helpful information. Um, we didn't make any moves on that just yet. Um, in thinking about equity and equality, um, you know, just applying a blanket. You know, student activity fee wouldn't necessarily meet our goals of equality. When we're talking about what those things are, are do for our students, what the goals are. We have some teaching and learning uh, department budget updates to provide. And we received our, received our excess uh, and deficiency certification, um, which will update our budget as well. So walking through the budget reductions, um, so these are reductions to our operating budget. So from the teaching and learning budget reduction, we did remove the portrait of the Shova educator work. Um, we were pushing that to FY twenty-six. I know that Assistant Superintendent Friend and her teaching and learning team and all of our educators and all of our principals are doing. A significant amount of work right now on uh, all sorts of things. Um, while it would be great to have this, this is certainly something that we can move uh, to our next fiscal year. Um, I do want to signal to the committee that we are not doing anything just of yet with any sort of reduction around our literacy. Uh, curriculum adoption, um, expectation within the FY twenty-five budget. We know how that's such an important building block for all of the work that we do within the district and that still remains within the budget. Um, that's just uh, quite frankly, a, a removal that would just, um, at this point, we don't feel like it's um. It's prudent to do so. So some quick updates to health insurance are rate from the Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association uh, came in. Um, our rep has given us a quote of four point one two percent increase as of right now. That is not making any adjustments to our current plan and how the setup and structure is. There was some adjustment to budgeting counts. So you know, we, we will, we build in a buffer. However. Um, I was reminded through the insurance advisory committee process that we do have one plan that we're not accepting any new membership to. So if somebody comes in new to the district, there's two options, not full three. Um, and if somebody uh, wants to switch plans within the district, they can only move to the other plan that's available. They can't go to this third plan. It's sort of grandfathered in still. So I removed those um, those buffers as well and the resulting uh, decreased the operating budget is a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars in the cost. Um, estimated cost of our health insurance for next year. Uh, the insurance advisory committee uh, is still reviewing the potential changes to plans and we'll talk about that a little bit further on. So I'm going to turn it over to uh, Superintendent Downing to give an update on our enrollment based staffing. Um, with regards to our sections across the district.
Thank you. Um, as you know, we have our class size standards of twenty-four to one for classrooms through to twelve, twenty-two to one for, for. Kindergarten, first and second grade. In the budget uh, for um, MRE, we had forecasted a kindergarten, fourth and fifth grade section. These are not currently sections that are MRE. We feel like we can pull them out at time, at this time. One is based upon that currently. At kindergarten, we have fifty-two students enrolled for next year. And so there's a high probability, although not a guarantee. Uh, that that kindergarten enrollment standard will remain bu- uh, sixty-six or below that maintains us in those standards. And in fourth and fifth grade, we think we'll be able to remain uh, within that twenty-four student ratio standard. And also remind uh, the committee that embedded in those numbers are students. That do not access the classroom for a great majority of day due to uh, the specialized nature of their instruction in a pullout setting. For a specialized program at that school. So those are three positions that we had built into the original budget that we're going to retract right now. And so in retracting a kindergarten position, we also retract the. Uh, kindergarten instructional assistant position, which is not a current employee. That would be an anticipated employee um, from the system. Uh, looking at our courses, oops.
Nope, sorry folks. There we go.
Uh, looking uh, at some course consolidation at the high school, we were, are able to determine that we can. Contract some sections of courses um, in the world language department that will then. Allow us to continue to teach the same courses and the same languages at the high school. Uh, but because of their, their class sizes, uh, we're able to pull some sections together and that, that will result hopefully in one FTE. And then we also have a center school classroom, which is a current fifth grade classroom that is uh, near the threshold. Of, of the twenty-four, it's, it would be twenty-three students and twenty-four students. Um, and that particular grade level, the historical analysis shows us that zero, there's a zero to one student change annually. Uh, but it was something we'd have to mon- monitor. But to get there, we know we have to look at these things. And we know that, that uh, those, those class size limits are thin, but they are currently under our thresholds. So when you reduce those elements of the budget, um, the, the total estimated cost of that reduction is three hundred and seventy-eight thousand. Eight hundred eighty-one dollars.
So as we said, the other lever that we looked at um, to bring down our assessment uh, structure to the town. Um, is increasing our offsets to the budget. So one lever that we always know that we take a look at is a, a school district and our regional school district, district is our excess and deficiency offset. Um, you may recall from, uh, I think it was October even maybe, um, that we talked a little bit about excess and deficiency. As far as how it was structured and built. Um, so this year, um, we have a certified uh, excess and deficiency balance of just over two point four million. Which is great. Um, however, given where our budget is at right now and what our assessments look like to the towns. We're looking to increase that excess deficiency offset um, from one point two million, which it was the last several years. Uh, to one point seven for next year. So the offset impact um, to the operating budget assessment ends up being a reduction of five hundred thousand dollars. I hate to crowd slides, um, but I did put in here a historical look at what our certified E and D was. And of that certified E and D in a fiscal year, what did we um, use as an appropriation to the budget? What balance did we re, we leave remaining in that excess and deficiency um, fund? And then what are, what that balance was as a percentage of the entire certification? So you can see, um, while we're sort of on the healthier end, um, at one point seven compared to where it's been. Uh, we've been, we've been higher, um, as far as what our percentages, um, we've been much lower as well. Um, but as you can see from a strictly dollar balance over time, um, we're sort of in a healthy position. Um, but again, um, I caution the committee and, and I just want to signal that. You know, you can't guarantee an excess and deficiency is going to come in the same year over year. So we just have to be thoughtful about that. School choice tuition. So we know that we increased our school choice uh, seats over, um. What we had as we reopened uh, school choice in a strategic way in certain places uh, with specific numbers. This was not in place, uh, when we created the FY twenty-four budget. Um, so in creating the FY twenty-five budget, we know that we can bring in um, approximately a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in. Um, school choice tuition next year. Uh, I sat with Kathleen Ardi, who's our data specialist. We went into the. Security portal. We looked at all of our rosters, um, and we can use this as a tuition, excuse me, as an offset to the budget. Of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars um, to bring down the cost um, or the budget for our health insurance. I just want to be sure, be clear that our cost does not change. So um, we're just bringing down how much goes into the operating budget. Um, or what is paid from the operating budget towards health insurance. So if you look at our entire health insurance bill over the course of a year. The great majority of it will come from the operating budget. However, a small slice of it can come from an offset in school choice tuition. So that brings down um, our budget as well. So here's a summary.
May I, may I comment on that slide?
Sure.
Um, I just want to comment here that as a policy decision last year, this committee. Elected to open school choice based on a recommendation from the school district. Um, in a very sort of targeted and specific way based on grade levels. And based on responsibility in, in ensuring that it, it wouldn't trigger additional staff. So the revenue that was able to be brought in through additional students who we welcome to our school district, we did not add any additional staff. Uh, yet we were able to yield some additional funds uh, to offset our budget. Ross.
So here is a summary of all those reductions and offsets and what it re, what it yields is a total reduction to the operating budget assessment. Of one point two million dollars. And the result uh, obviously in the operating budget uh, is reflected here. And here's where you can see the real impact of that one point two million dollars. Again, it's not at that one point five. Uh, that we are, we are aiming for, um, but we got to one point two. Um, and it certainly brings down uh, the operating budget assessments to our towns. Again, the capital debt assessment's not going to change. Um, but we can see where the percentage change are, changes are right now. Um, and what their total operating budget assessments are for each three of our towns. This is again, the goal that we are shooting for. So you can see the difference here. I'm just going to back up a slide so you can see. Right now we're at four point seven, six and three point three, we'll call it. Um, uh, where we wanted to be if we did the full one point five. Uh, was a four point two increase, essentially a five point five increase and a two point seven increase. So Superintendent Downing, do you want to take the next, uh, well, the first uh, next step?
So as you can see from the previous slides that um, Ms. Mo Karen showed you. We still have roughly around two hundred and ninety thousand dollars to go to reach that. Uh, one point five million dollar contraction target that we're aiming for. I want to use this as an opportunity to say. I'm very encouraged and optimistic that we're going to be able to hit that target. Um, as we've been working with our insurance advisory committee. Um, we have a, a, a collection of education, our school system that recognize the challenge that is in front of us. And currently we are looking at um, the health insurance plans in, in structuring those in a way. That can both be beneficial to the employees in the school system. And decrease uh, the burden upon the district budget simultaneously. Um, we've had some conversations and we believe that we have a tentative agreement there, which I shouldn't say we believe, we do have a tentative agreement. But that agreement needs to be ratified by both the school committee and um, our uh, bargaining units. So uh, we can't release that information publicly tonight. Uh, but the meetings that we've had in recent days are highly encouraging. Uh, that uh, the result of that will take us over that one point five million dollar threshold. Mr. Mo Karen.
Yep, so um, for next week's public hearing and uh, school committee meeting, we'll have an update. On where uh, that insurance uh, update will land as far as a dollar number and what the final impact is to our assessments. Um, and then obviously uh, the budget is put before this committee for a vote uh, the week after that. Um, and then it's off to our annual town meetings for our presentations and votes by our member towns. My apologies on this slide. Uh, the very bottom there is not updated. I had myself convinced that it was updated, but I had. Updated the slide for the, the joint FinCom last night. So I'll update this and get it to you. Um, but obviously we've made a lot of progress on our timeline and we're really, we're nearing the end. Um, and we're, like Superintendent Downing said, we're, we're getting signals that we're headed towards a, a, a good result. Uh, in getting to that one point five million dollar reduction in our operating assessments for our towns. So at this point, unless Superintendent Downing has anything else to add, I would assume that we would turn it over for any questions from the committee at this point.
Yeah, I think we can welcome questions, Madam Chair.
Great. Um, I see Dana's hand. Go for it Dana.
Okay, I have a lot of questions. So first, do we have to hit the target of one point five million? Like, did the towns give you any indication that you wouldn't? I don't know if the word is accept, the one point two that you've already reduced the budget by?
I'll go back to our last meeting as we talked about that and I believe Mr. Hares, you had some comments around that. The one point five million dollar, dollar target gets us to those places where we've talked about, talked with our town administrators and finance. Uh, representatives in the towns so that they are able to move forward with the totality of their budgets as well. So that target was developed in partnership with our town administrators as well as um. Um. Looking at how we can advance the educational program.
Okay. Are there options to remove more money from the E and D fund or what would the concerns for that be?
Uh, I, I will say, Ms. Ellis, that the E and D fund, I, I'm, I'm, I'll just tell you right now. I am highly nervous about removing as much as we are right now. Um, in removing more funds, we've got to remember our E and D fund points to our creditors. About the health of our district in terms of our finances. And as we are bonding a school project. We need to demonstrate that our reserve accounts are strong um, to, to um. Those agencies in order to get the, the best bonding rates that we can possibly get through the future of the project. In addition, we've gone through a scenario this year where the ant- uh, anticipated revenue we were hoping for out of chapter seventy-eight. Uh, did not come to fruition, nor will it next year. So we need to make sure we're maintaining an E and D account that is going to be able to help us in future years as well. As we work through these strategies. Um, so tapping into the E and D account. Um, more than we have today, I would not recommend at all. Uh, because even the thresholds that, that we're proposing here tonight. Uh, Mr. Mo Karen and I have been wringing our hands and, and sweating it out even with that amount.
Okay, um, are there any more anticipated or any more grants that are factored into the budget? That we should be aware of? Should we be concerned about more funding not coming through specifically like the literacy grant that we? Didn't receive, but we had anticipated receiving for two hundred thousand dollars?
Um, the literacy gap was the big one that we were counting on. The other grants that you, you may be recalling. Are the sort of the annual um, uh, federal grants that we get. Those are, we can always anticipate those. Um, and based upon where our thresholds are, we have a general sense. Those are already earmarked for programming in the district. So they would not serve any purpose in augmenting the budget at all.
And just to confirm that the literacy, um, that curriculum is still going to be moving forward. You've been able to find that two hundred thousand dollars of the, the hole left from the grant elsewhere?
Well, Ms. Ellis, we haven't necessarily found two hundred thousand dollars elsewhere, but that doesn't mean we don't have other tricks up our sleeves. We can work with our vendors and think about pricing proposals. Um, looking at uh, right now, I know uh, we've instructed all of our building leaders that. We haven't frozen budgets, but we've, we've put, put them on frost, if you will. To look at our current spending now to optimize that, to see if there's a portion of that program we could look at purchasing this year. To look at our current spending now to optimize that, to see if there's a portion of that program we could look at purchasing this year. Through some actualized savings, um, and we're working with our vendors on on what um. A graduated payment structure could look like. So there's some other tricks that we can use to pay for the totality of that program.
Um, the primary commit connections program, so um. So were the class size estimates you provided during the budget workshop based on the creation of this primary connections program? Or would those kids have been placed elsewhere if there wasn't a program?
So the primary connections program is a program we want to get started in anticipation of the future. And we know that we're going to have students in in grades two through five. What we're hoping to do with primary connections is have two bandwidths, a K through two bandwidth and a three through five bandwidth. Now, uh regulations allow a forty eight month bandwidth for any specialized program. So second graders that would be in that program can be woven into the three, four, five program and still be within regulations. So the K to one would be anticipatory and we really don't understand and know those until we see the students in front of us and we go through those proper processes. So we are functioning currently without that program and uh. We decided that it's best right now so that we can work on this, that that is certainly a goal for the future. But we believe we can continue with the educational program now.
That's all I have.
Great, thanks Dana. Uh, Amy Cohen.
Thank you. Um, I had two questions. One was regarding the school choice. Um, number that was shared and could you just remind me? I know you said that it wasn't planned that, I don't have the slide in front of me, it will probably be helpful, but. The number that you shared with us wasn't included in the budget for last year. The school committee hasn't taken a vote to. Open school choice for this year yet, correct? So how, where is that number coming from?
You, you took a vote to open up school choice for this year. So the students that came this year. Through the October one count data, the funds come to us this year and we apply it to the next budget.
Okay.
So when you take your school. When you take your, your school choice vote again this April. Um, depending on whether you vote yes or no to open school choice, if you continue to vote yes under the methodology we brought forward last year. Any increased enrollment based upon that would then be applied in FY twenty seven.
Got it. Thank you for clearing that up for me.
I, I would also, I would also just add those students that came in this year to school choice will not leave us. If the committee does not open up more seats.
We'll always have that income every year.
Yeah, until they, until those students graduate, right? If nothing, i- if no other additional seats or students are brought in, those students would. Would continue to bring in school choice tuition um until they graduate.
Okay, and then I just have one other question um regarding the world language classes. Um, so I, I think I heard you say that there wouldn't be a change to the. Courses that are offered.
Correct.
This would just be consolidating.
Solidating sections while remaining under the class size count of twenty four per classroom.
Okay, that's important to me because I recall that our strategic plan. I think actually identifies growing the world languages program and. So I just want community members to be aware that, you know, um. That there's fiscal realities associated with, with these things, you know, um.
And Miss Cohen, that, those are, are two sort of parallel tracks, if you will. When we talk about growing the world language pro- programs, we know we have um. Goals of bringing in a Portuguese program to the high school and, and when we have the opportunity to do that. And students choose Portuguese, they won't choose other languages. So uh the FTE still will balance out over time. So that goal is around. The breadth of course offerings in world languages as, as opposed to the number of courses, if that, if I'm making that clear.
I think so. I was thinking more in terms of starting world languages earlier. I think that's something that's been kind of. Identified as a goal, a long-term goal and.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so I, I just, I just want to make the point publicly that. There's a lot of things that parents w- want uh for their children's education, but um. There's also a lot of discussion about, you know, how much our taxes increase and we can't, we can't do it all, you know? Um. So.
Hey, Dana, uh, over to Mike.
Thank you. Um, the conversation about trying to hit that one point five million dollar uh. Uh, I, I believe you call it a contraction. That's sort of a, a. Seems like a convenient word. Is that right? A contraction?
Well, I, I, I landed on contraction, Mr. Hares, because. There, it's not as if you're cutting the budget. It's, it's cutting the budget and offsetting it with.
Right.
Venus.
No, I, I, that's, that's a fair term. Uh, I just wanted to make sure I was using the same thing. Um, so when we got certified with our E and D at two point four, that, that is by far the highest we've been in the past several years and it felt like a relief. Um, and then it felt like we um, you know, in order to meet that one point five million dollar contraction, we had to. Then withdraw and we're still ahead of where we've been, but certainly well behind. Um, and I'm wondering, um, you know, because our E and D balance is. So important to the, the, the fiscal health of the district. Um, I wonder if there are options that can be provided or at least like. Um. See if there's interest by the committee to explore other options of finding. Efficiencies within the operating budget in, or i- either instead of taking the five hundred thousand from E and D. Or maybe taking less out of E and D and finding further efficiencies to meet that, that uh, that difference. I mean, I personally would be in favor of at least exploring that, but if the rest of the committee um. Um, is not, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm certainly happy to go along with the majority, but it feels like that might be uh something to consider.
So one of the areas that we're working on right now, Mr. Hares, is we, we look, need to look at our athletics and activities fees. And right now we're not charging for activities fees and our athletic fees, we got to look. Uh, we've asked uh Ms. Rich to look at uh what are models in the towns within the league? To look at what our competitive uh stance is relative to that, to understand, do we need to increase those fees? Uh, we're also looking at uh fee structures for uh uh extracurricular activities. We would only um. Uh, add fees to programs uh that are, are. Um, not essential to the student life. Uh, Laura, remind me the term that we were discussing today? I'm dr- I'm drawing a blank.
Which one?
Uh, in terms of our activities fees, some of the uh.
Oh, first, first service related.
Yeah. Service related fee uh uh after-school activities. Student councils, community groups, things like that, we wouldn't charge fees for. Um, so if they're service-related and service.
Gender Sexuality Alliance, African um heritage.
Yeah, we would keep those activities uh on a, on a non-fee basis. But it's other activities that we would look at fee structures at. And also looking at our total balance, if you recall, Mr. Hares, uh, our activities. Um, balances two hundred and seventy eight thousand, Mr. Mulcaren, I think I'm right around the right number there. Um, we need, we're going to be meeting with principals and looking at enrollment across all of those activities and find out. Where there's low enrollment and low participation, we may have to make the deci- difficult decision of eliminating some activities. And, and directing students towards other interests in that effort. So that is something we are currently studying that has the potential. Uh, to help augment that. What that dollar amount is um is difficult to say at the moment.
So, so just to be clear then. You're, you're li- you're, you're already a couple of steps ahead of my question then, that there is consideration. To find further efficiencies to reduce the amount that we're withdrawing from E and D?
Yes, we are. And, and I'll say, Mr. Hares, even let's just hypothetically say we land on this number where the E and D is proposed. We're still going to pursue um uh the fee structures for activities and athletics. Um, because we think that is, is i- it's, it's common practice. Uh, and uh it also helps funds, fund those activities. Um, structures are put in a place like family caps and things of that nature to make sure that, that, that people that have many. Kids in the schools don't um, you know, end up in high, high fees for activities. We, we need to look at some of those structures and so we're currently working on it.
Great. Thank you.
Right, over to Jackie.
I just, um, I had a clarifying question about the staffing at M R E. Um.
Yeah.
Would that impact existing positions? That part was, I'm sorry, it was unclear to me.
Current employees?
Mm-hmm.
No. So all three of those positions, including the kindergarten assistant. Um, are, are not in uh the budget. I, I mean, are not tied to employees. They were, they were budgetary placeholders for any anticipated need.
So that anticipated need is coming. I guess I just want to highlight for any community members watching um this meeting or and may not have been able to attend yesterday's presentation. I really appreciated how you both stepped everything out for our three communities, um. But I think it is important to note that the staffing and student class sizes is. Uh, an important thing that our communities consider. Um. It does lead to specific better student outcomes, but from a fiscal uh perspective, it has implications as well. Um, so I'm just. Wanting to highlight that for our communities and for Lancaster, who has the most increasing number of student enrollment.
So thank you for that, uh, Dr. Ryan. I, I think in, in talking about that too, it, it goes well to say. These are the standards across all three of our towns. No one town is treated differently than the other two towns. When it comes to staffing our schools because that's the agreement we've made in coming together.
Thank you.
Over to you, Amy.
Thank you. I kind of wanted to follow up on the discussion, um. Uh, Scott, did we skip over you? I saw you there. Okay. Um. About the extracurricular um fee structure and kind of flip it and ask about stipends. Because I know that stipends for. Those activities are set in negotiated um collective bargaining agreements, but. Uh, I'm wondering if that is something that will be reviewed because it's my understanding that those stipends. It's a decision each year which stipends get funded and which don't. Um, and is that something you're reviewing in terms of potential cost savings?
Miss Cohen, you said something with different words that was the same thing I said earlier. So I'm glad you said it that way for those that are. Are looking at it. That's the two hu- that's the cost in the budget right now. That's two hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars. That's the stipends. So as we look at the activities and we look at enrollment in those activities and we see low participation. Those are going to be the areas that we point to first with principles of saying, we're not going to be able to run those programs and pay those stipends. Um, and, and look at that in an equitable fashion across the schools. So yes, we're looking at, at both sides of making sure we're offering. Extracurriculars that are the extracurriculars our students are asking for. But doing it in a way that almost applies sort of like, not the same as our class size standards, but I, I think you get what I mean. That we have very, very intensive programs like robotics. That is a year-long process that is involved in competitions and then other activities that are not as intense as that. And so we're going to go through with principles and prioritize those um in, in an effort to help with that scenario as well. So what our goal is to come back next week with um a, a targeted uh dollar amount that we can look at. Um, in the, in both those things.
All right, so over to Scott.
Thanks, Leah. So first I want to commend the administration for um doing such a great job of approaching the township's targets for the spending. Um, however, I am going to say that the, by increasing the E and D appropriation to one point seven million, I think it's. Fiscally irresponsible to do that. Um, that's not. A trick that we can repeat over and over again. If we had been, say, for example, using one point seven million for the last few years. We wouldn't currently have the two point four million that we have in E and D. Um, I know budgeting is a very, you know, um. Exercise that requires a lot of detail and even a little bit of luck. And we've been fortunate over the last several years to come in approximately a half a million dollars under budget. But, you know, as, as recent experience shows, if we just have. Some, some additional needs or if we have a bad winter where we have a lot of snow removal or it's extra cold and our heating costs are higher. We could just easily come in on budget or over budget. So looking to use extra E and D to offset the budget, I think is. Like I say, fiscally irresponsible and something we will not be able to repeat in future years. And, you know, as our debt servicing goes up. You know, we're going to be looking for more E and D money to, to offset those increases and the money just won't be available. So. You know, I'm going to reiterate something I said at the last meeting, which is, you know. Please come to us with some alternative ways to, you know. What, what kind of program changes are available or other things we can do to read, reach the township's goals or alternatively. Spend a little more money and don't, you know, don't quite get where the townships want us to get to because, you know, this is. The consequence of having decided to build a high school is we're going to have higher expenses to, to pay for that debt and we need to find ways to pay for it. Other than taking it out of E and D, so.
I appreciate that, Mr. Powell, uh noted. Uh, the, the, the conversation we've had tonight regarding activities and athletics will support. That, uh, I will say there's no way of, that is not going to get us five hundred thousand. Um, it, it is only one thing to do. So, uh, yes, we will continue to do that. And, and, and come forward next week with um the progress we've made today.
Yeah, I'll say that I, I would echo Scott's concerns. Um, that bond rating is so important. And we don't want to cut off our nose to spite our face here by. Using E and D to keep the taxpayer bill low to then only have the bond go up. Um, so finding ways to keep E and D intact is important. I think it's actually super easy to see E and D. Get depleted next year and then we'd be in big trouble. So I would also be in favor of maybe. Going a little bit higher than the towns want um and maybe meeting somewhere in the middle. Um, I'd just like to say though, really quickly as a reminder to everyone who might be listening, all five people or whoever. Um, that this is the state. Like giving us the lowest amount possible this year. And it's incredibly frustrating that towns like us. Are being told that we are only going to get the minimum increase, which is thirty dollars a child. Although I think that what I heard you say at the uh joint FinCom last night was that we are among two hundred and twelve municipalities.
Yeah.
That also had this happen to them this year. So we are not alone. Um, we have got a statewide issue with the revenues coming in low and the governor. And the general court trying to cut back on us. And so this is not okay. This is not your fault. It's not our town's faults. Um, and I just wonder if there's any effort. To kind of seek redress with the legislature.
So Madam Chair, as a matter of fact, um, the tri-county superintendents are meeting with our state representatives next Friday. And so this is on the agenda for us to address with those state legislators. And I know M A S S is lobbying those efforts similar to last year. Those efforts were effective for school systems that were given the minimum last year and it was increased to sixty dollars per student. And some other systems to ninety, so some effort was made there. Um, so we will continue those lobbying efforts. I'll also, uh, as I mentioned last night. E and D as a total pool for the Commonwealth over the last two years. Was funded at its statutory limit of a four point five percent increase year over year. And this year's increase in the total pool is only a one point three percent increase. And the governor's office is citing a, a leveling of state receipts this year. As the rationale for some of the, the areas of the budget that are being. as the rationale for some of the, the areas of the budget that are being leveled off, like the chapter seventy funding.
Yeah. I mean, this is an effect of our enrollment, everyone. And so if our enrollment continues to go down, uh, we have a pro, we have a continuing problem. And so for all of our towns, people listening, um, that's on us, right? So if I, the, and it may just be a natural progression of the census data. Um, but this is kind of, it's not because the district is overspending and it's actually quite the opposite. We are doing ever more with ever less. And, um, you know, the formulas are kind of working against us right now.
I misspoke in saying E and D when I meant chapter seventy. I hope I didn't anybody there. It's chapter seventy that is the area. I will also let you know that, that M A S S is going to continue to lobby for an increase in the percentage of circuit breaker funds as well as regional transportation. I know that Mars is having conversations around regional transportation efforts as well. So we're, we're, we're doing the annual dance of, of working with our state representatives uh, in their committee work to get those increases through.
That's, um, that helps. Mike, did you want to add anything?
You know, just real quick, um, I, I just want to reiterate that, um, you know, everything that you said was true. Um, uh, Leah, everything you said was true and I appreciate you bringing that to light, uh, and making that kind of public. We are a regionalized district and all three of our towns, um, have, um, very different percentage changes. I do not like to draw lines. Um, but we have, um, representatives from Stowe potentially suggesting that we increase our spending so that we don't have to reduce E and D. But remember Bolton and especially Lancaster is paying considerably more. So I just, I, I guess what I come down to, um, is that I'm, I'm, I'm putting, um, our faith in the good sense decisions that our administration is making and, and bringing options to the committee so that we can, we can vote on, um, the best, uh, choice that's best for all three towns.
Mike. Yeah, I recognize that the burden falls on Stowe the least, although we have the biggest portion of the budget. So like the percentage increase is lower, but our total spending is the highest. And again, I just want to reiterate that we don't want to cut off our nose to spite our face because if we try to reduce right now and then our bond rating sinks and bond number two comes up in another year and the rate is at eight percent, um, that's going to hurt way more for way longer. So, you know, we're going to be paying that interest for however many years we take the bond out. I think Ross, you, you said that these things can't be, um, refinanced for nine years.
Yeah, and we still have more bonding to do. Um, you know, so, um, there, there's a bigger conversation there about where the Fed's at and where rates will be. Um, we'll put our bond advisory group back together and do the very best we can for our taxpayers when it comes to the bonds. Um, but again, you know, we, we, we do recognize, um, all pieces of, of using the E and D and that's why I continue to, to put out a precautionary statement when I do talk about E and D.
Thanks, Ross. Yeah. Anything that comes out of my mouth is because you told me, you guys told me. So I appreciate it. Um, all right, everybody. So that's the budget update. Keep in mind that March sixth, everyone is going to be the budget hearing. Um, it is likely that we might have a regular meeting attached to that, but, uh, that is unclear at this point. We will let you know ASAP. But it'll be a very short, regular meeting if we do need one. Uh, but the hearing is on the sixth. We can hear from, we'll have a short presentation as we always do with the budget hearing, um, of the most recent information. And all of the public is welcome to attend and, um, weigh in as they always are welcome. And, um, the budget hearing is virtual, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
If I may say about the budget hearing, we're going to put that information in front of you, um, in front of the committee and in front, uh, so when we give the budget hearing, we'll give a very brief presentation on, on the adjustments based upon the conversation we've had tonight. Just know after the hearing, if there's other direction or levers that are still available prior to the thirteenth, it's plausible. It might not be until the thirteenth that we ultimately land on our final budget number that we vote. So don't just assume that the, that the March sixth number is the vote on the thirteenth. We present the Mar six number as if it is going to be the vote on the thirteenth. Listen to the feedback from our community and then listen to the direction and advice of our committee as well.
Excellent. All right, everybody. Um, so the budget update, uh, we are through with that. We're going to move over to, um, some unfinished business. And that is the district calendar and taking a vote to make those couple of changes that were presented at the last meeting. And so Amy, could I rely on you for a motion?
Yep. Um, I moved to approve the revised twenty-five to twenty twenty-six. Did I say that right? Twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six school year calendar is presented on February seventh, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Please.
It's, it is the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five calendar. The changes we're making are for the
pause. I, there was some like, you know, dissonance, cognitive dissonance going on there.
So Amy, will you amend your motion?
Yep.
To reflect that it's the twenty-four, twenty-five district calendar? You can just say yes. And I, and I seconded it. So I don't mind that amendment to the motion. Um, Scott, was that your discussion point? Excellent. Okay. Anybody else? All right, let's take the vote. I vote yes. Joe.
Yes.
Amy Vessels. Amy V.
Yes.
Thank you. Sean Dore.
Yes.
Uh, Mike.
Yes.
Dana.
Yes.
Uh, Scott?
Yes.
Uh, Jackie.
Yes.
Sharon.
Yes.
Amy C.
Yes.
And Karen.
Yes.
Awesome. Thanks, guys. Um, moving on to, uh, subcommittee reports. All right, guys. Here we go. The home stretch. Let's go over to budget and warrant. What's new?
All right. Um, so budget warrant met, um, on February thirteenth, which was the day before, uh, I, I believe it was the day before the, um, school committee meeting. So, um, uh, we did get an update on the budget timeline, which Mr. Mulcarren, um, reviewed, uh, today. Uh, we did get confirmation of the E and D balance certification. Um, we had, um, a conversation about the formatting of revolving accounts and the quarterly reporting. Um, and we had conversations about the, um, uh, circuit breaker, statutes and, and regulations. Um, we, we did decide that we will have, um, a March seventh meeting after the public hearing, but before, um, the vote. So, um, that's going to come a little bit earlier than expected, but I think that's generally for, um, and one more opportunity for the, the subcommittee or the public to get together and have, uh, an opportunity to ask questions about the budget.
Awesome. Thanks, Mike. Over to communication.
Our communication is moving right along with, um, this school committee manual. Um, one thing just for the committee to be aware of, the manual that we will be, um, presenting to you for, um, your consideration in, as soon as we can get it on the agenda, I guess, is, um, it looks very different than the manual that we have had. There are not, the content is largely the same. There are not big changes to content in the manual. Um, there are some changes that have, things that have been updated, um, that reflect either current practice or, uh, changes in the law since, um, the manual was last, uh, updated. Um, but because of formatting, it will look very different. So just so you have that heads up that when you get this document, um, it is it's, it will be challenging to side by side, look at the two. Um, you can certainly take the sections and look at each section, but the order is going to be very different. The content is large to the, largely the same.
Sharon, do, uh, just let me know when you want to get that on the agenda. Okay?
Yeah, you can, we can get it on the agenda, um, whenever it is, there's room on the agenda. We have um, gone through all the entire manual. We've done all of the updating right now. Um, we're working on adding links and more formatting things. Um, so I'm not concerned about the format so much in terms of presenting it to the committee. Um, what I'd like
Sharon, can I just throw in, the only thing that we still have to kind of really spend some time on is the appendix, part of the appendix. I think that's going to take us a little bit of time, a couple of those, so we might just want to, I know we're meeting next week, so maybe we could get back to Leah then, because maybe we can take a look and see how much time we need.
Okay. So there you have it.
Awesome. And I think that we basically set a deadline on ourselves for like the next orientation, which is June. Um, you know, getting new members oriented, like that's the tool, that's why the tool exists at this point. So anything before June is fine, I think. And even if it's not before June, it's still fine. You just let me know.
Okay.
All right, cool. Thanks, Sharon. Uh, over to the school building committee and Joe.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, my report is actually going to be in two parts this evening. So, uh, the first part will be simply an update on our last meeting and the preface of our next meeting. So the building committee did meet on February fifteenth. It was an expedited meeting at that, at which we approved the submission to the uh, MSBA of what they call the design development report. Uh, this is the first requirement under module six. It's essentially uh, an updated report to the, um, MSBA regarding the design and development of the new high school. Um, currently the MSBA is reviewing the report and we are scheduled for a meeting with the MSBA on April tenth uh, to further review comments of their membership in regards to the design development. Uh, that is the first part. Oh, and our, and our next meeting, of course, will be on March twenty-first, uh, where we will be getting further updates on the design and development and, uh, further updates on the, um, uh, geothermal bidding. The second part of my report, uh, pertains to some comments that were made earlier this evening. And I want to preface the second part of my report by stating two things. One is that the members of the committee have constantly heard me write and or say that all plans are subject to change as this project progresses. Um, in that regard, I'm going to lean on that, uh, that motto, as it were, and suggest to the committee that all plans are in fact subject to change. Uh, there were some comments this evening regarding, uh, design issue with the high school, uh, specifically at the bathrooms. Uh, this is not, uh, information that is new uh, to the building committee, to our design team, to our administration and or to the members of the public. However, the second part, the second thing I want to say is that with regards to design issues, all design issues start with the building committee. So on February fifteenth at our meeting, I did intimate that, uh, there was an issue that has, uh, come to light of late and it pertains to the, uh, bathrooms. It was nothing that I announced at the meeting. I simply indicated there was an issue that arose that has arisen. Uh, wasn't ripe for discussion. Do not believe it is still ripe for discussion at this time despite what, uh, we may have heard this evening. So at this point, um, there has been some discussions between myself, the superintendent, and the superintendent has spoken with our working group. Um, he is, he was or is going to be visiting, uh, one of the, uh, schools that are, uh, design team had, uh, constructed and designed that has bathrooms similar to the ones that are part of our, uh, proposal. But in that regard, um, I will first and foremost, suggest that any further discussion on this has to start with the building committee, which we will do on March twenty-first. From there, uh, my inclination would be to open it up either at that meeting or perhaps the April meeting to some expanded public comment on this if it's such, if that is warranted, uh, by a decision of the committee. Uh, but at this point, I just want to be clear that the, the bathroom issue is something that's been on our radar for some time. Um, I don't believe it's ripe for further, uh, elucidation at this point. We will be addressing it in due course. Uh, but again, it has to start and it will start with our building committee. Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thanks, Joe. Over to personnel and Sharon. Anything new, Sharon?
No report.
Uh, over to policy and Karen.
I'm going to turn it over to Amy. I'm not on policy anymore.
Oh, weird. I'm so sorry.
I always forget to remind.
So, yeah, Lita, so Amy Vessels is the chair, which I definitely knew. So go ahead, Amy, in all your glory. What's up with policy?
Uh, we're meeting this week. I guess I want to know when you were gonna, so we have those tech policies that we'd already looked at and when did you want to put them on the, um, when did you want us to look at them at, at a school committee meeting?
Are, are they ready to rock and roll?
Yeah. Yeah, they have been. But there's a lot of them. There's ten.
Right. Um, so I'll chat with Kirk about that at our next Wednesday.
Yeah.
Um, conversation. I'm thinking like after the budget vote probably.
Yeah, there's opportunity there.
Okie doke. Um, thank you, Amy. I'll put it in the parking lot. Make sure it's in the parking lot. It is there. Um, was that it though, Amy?
Yes, we're meeting this coming week, so no other information.
And you're going to keep going with the, um, family communication policy? Is that right? Awesome. All right. Thanks, guys. Uh, over to audit advisory and Dana.
We have no report. We will meet on Monday.
Okie doke. Thanks, Dana. Um, over, well, Jackie, you gave, um, a little bit of a report earlier today. Was there anything else that you wanted to add to your Dear J report?
Yeah, so Dear J met, um, twice, once on February thirteenth and on the twenty-sixth. A lot of that conversation was around, um, equity audit recommendations and just the, I think processing, um, processing the process. And then also, uh, drafting a supportive statement for our administrators and student council.
Excellent. All right, moving over to CPAC. Karen, any update?
I wasn't at the last school committee meeting, but we, uh, I did attend a CPAC meeting at the end of January. Um, they are still definitely looking for people to join them, um, whether on the board or just as members. And tomorrow evening, there is a, um, presentation on their, their Facebook page, uh, for, um, basic rights for, um, evaluation and eligibility tomorrow at six. It's online. So if anyone is interested in that, you can find the, uh, initial of a CPAC page and get the link there.
All right. Thanks, Karen, for that. So guys, items for the next agenda, obviously we've already talked about how the next meeting will be, um, the budget hearing. If we need to have a regular meeting, I will let you know, but it will definitely be short. And then we will have an in-person meeting, I'm fairly certain, on the March thirteenth date, which is also the date that we will take the final vote on the budget to submit to the towns because the regional agreement does require it. Um, anything else that is super pressing that you would like me to put on the radar? Go ahead, Dana.
I just had a quick question about the budget meeting on the thirteenth. You said that it was in person. Is there any? I cannot remote in on that one. I'll be at the airport during that time.
Um, so we don't normally, yeah, we don't normally do the hybrid option.
Okay.
Um, and we really just need a quorum of school committee members, but why don't you and I chat about that?
Okay.
Um, afterward.
No problem.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Um.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Th- this is in regards to the planning calendar.
Yes.
Um, knowing that, uh, we have to get some of the insurance facts to our bargaining units for them to go through a ratification process. And with no school happening on Tuesday, that's going to be very difficult to pull off before the sixth. So Madam Chair, we should add an executive session to March thirteenth for the consideration of ratification of benefit changes.
Very good.
So the official numbers on that really won't come out till, till budget, budget night, but we should be able to have a forecast.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the order here? All right, everyone, um, as always, if anything comes to you, just shoot me an email and I will put it on my list and Kirk and I will discuss on Wednesdays. And, um, if there's nothing else. And um if there's nothing else, I'm gonna move to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Amy. And Joe has taught me well. There will be no discussion. We're just gonna take the vote. And I vote yes. Joe?
Yes.
Amy Vessels.
Yes.
Shondor.
Yes.
Jackie.
Trying to be fast, yes.
Dana.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Sharon.
Yes.
Amy Cohen.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
And Mike.
Yes.
Alright, everybody. Thanks for your time and